Let me now try to get you to be upstanding, please, and welcome the Prime City Council Mayor, councillor Brendan Block.
Before I start tonight's meeting, I wanted to note that I had the privilege last week of attending two moving festival launches, our Jazz Festival and Ten Days on the Island, both of which had a strong focus on First Nations Indigenous communities. It gave me pause to reflect on the wording, practice and intent around an acknowledgement of country, and last Thursday I inquired with our RAP Working Group as to how we might enhance and deepen the wording of our council acknowledgement for future meetings and written documentation. This is a journey of understanding we are all on, and I look forward to their work on this. Moving on to acknowledgement of country, I acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. I pay respect to elders past and present and recognise their continuing spiritual connection to the land. Before we commence with tonight's meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect before we commence with the council meeting. Councillors, please be seated. This meeting has been broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council work, on council's website. Having said that, welcome one and all to our council meeting for Monday, the 6th of February 2023. I note that we have a full house, so there's no need for apologies. Moving on to item number three of the agenda, are there any declarations from councillors? There being none, I move on now to be heading to our omnibus items. Item 4.1, confirmation of the minutes. The most is that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 23rd of January 2023, the adjourned meeting of 16 January 2023 had been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, I move on now to 4.2, Mayor's Communication, and diary entries for myself and the Deputy Mayor, councillor Alison Ritchie, have been circulated. Moving now on to item 4.3, council workshops as listed in the agenda. On to 4.4, so are there any petitions to be tabled?
There are none.
Thank you. And we move now on to 4.5, reports from outside bodies. First one being the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority. Councillor Walker, anything to report here?
The first meeting will occur on Thursday.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Taswater Corporation, and I table the quarterly report to owners' representatives' progress update to 31 December 2022. I also advise that Mayor Wayne Johnston of Meander Valley Council has been appointed to the position of Chief Owners' Representative, and in addition, we are finalising arrangements for Taswater to attend a workshop in March to provide elected members with an update on statewide initiatives and local projects, and to answer any questions that councillors may have.
Just on a question.
Yes, councillor James.
Any news on the dividend from Taswater?
So.
Through you, Mayor, we have not received any communication that I'm aware of regarding the dividend, but when we do, we will update councillors.
Thank you, councillor James. Moving now on to the Greater Hobart Committee, the first meeting of the Greater Hobart Committee is tentatively scheduled to be held on the 15th of March. That, we received communication to how that date may change, as the responsible minister, Minister Barnett, at this stage has a conflicting appointment, but as soon as that is locked away, I'll, I'll inform colleagues. As you'd be aware from my diary entries, the mayors of Greater Hobart meet on a monthly basis, and we met last Wednesday, the 1st of February, for our first meeting of the year, and at the start of that meeting, we met, we met with two opposition shadow ministers, Mr Dean Winter MP and the Honourable Luke Edmonds MLC, who's well known to all of us. Mr Winter has responsibility for the opposition's position on the Hobart City Deal through his Shadow Economic Development Portfolio Responsibility, and the Honourable Luke Edmonds MLC has recently been, been appointed to the Shadow Ministry with responsibility for local government planning and disability. It was a wide-reaching and very productive discussion with, with both those shadow ministers. Also at that meeting, we settled both our state and federal budget submissions. Are there any other reports from council and special committee and other representative bodies? There being none, I now move on to 4.6, weekly briefing reports. Weekly briefing reports of the 16th, the 23rd and the 30th of January 2023 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I refer council to the briefing report of the 30th of January with regard to the five-mile beach course golf course update. There is a fairly lengthy pro, process that's been outlined on the weekly briefing report, and my question through you to the acting CEO, there was, has been, and there is a petition, I understand, circulating with some, quite a few people that have actually signed that. Has that, or will that be presented to council, or is it in the pipeline to be presented to council? And secondly, I note on page five of the weekly briefing report, there is some, some discussion that needs to be with regard to negotiation of a lease of this land with the Crown, and that would be undertaken concurrently with the submission of the DA to council. So how, how, how far has that progressed? And is it necessary for the Crown to approve the lease prior to a DA being submitted to council?
So.
Through you, Mayor, I might attempt to answer a part of that question and then throw to our manager of city planning. With regards to the petition, we're aware of its existence. I'm not aware that it's yet been tabled with council, so the question for when that will come to council is probably one directed to the organisers of the petition. We will, of course, deal with it in any, in the same way that we would with any petition when it does come to us. In relation to the second matter, I might ask the manager of city planning, Ross Lovell.
Mr Lovell.
The, there is no planning application with us at the moment, but I do acknowledge one is proposed. The legislation requires the Crown's consent within application, but as to whether there are any other legal requirements it has to fulfil, they will be matters between the state and, and the applicant, they wouldn't be part of the planning process.
Thank you, Mr Lovell.
supplementary, yes. Does that mean, Mr Lovell, that the, that the Crown will have to approve the lease prior to submission of the DA to council?
Mr Lovell.
No, I think the lease is a separate matter under separate legislation. It's not a matter that would be considered when the planning application is assessed. All it is required is that the minister or his representative give consent to the lodging of the application.
Thank you, Mr Lovell. Councillor James?
Thank you.
Are there any other matters arising from the weekly briefing reports? There, there being none, I note that we're at the end of the omnibus items. Can I have a mover for these? Thank you councillor Chong, seconded councillor Kennedy. All those in favour? Thank you. Against? Say carry, thank you. Moving now on to item number five, public question time. 5.1, public questions on notice. A question has been received from Mr Victor Marsh of BelReeve as listed on the agenda. So, could you please read Mr Marsh's question?
Thank you, Mayor. The question on notice from Mr Marsh asks, how does the recently-elected mayor's pre-election platform of continuing to fight for the return of Kangaroo Bay to public hands differ from the views of the alderman accused of using tactics reminiscent of Nazi Germany's Joseph Goebbels when opposing development at the 9th of February 2021 meeting?
Thank you, CEO, and I'll, I'll read the answer to that. The matter of the Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Hospitality School has been debated for many years and is rightly an issue that our community cares deeply about. It is a special place, and it deserves to be an iconic focal point for activity in our great city. My views leading up to the election were clear. The time was nearly up in relation to substantial commencement, and action was required from Shambrood, or the buyback option the council has should be exercised. As a new council, we've debated this in recent months and have collectively come to the same conclusion, giving reasonable consideration to the information presented to us throughout and always following due process, which is our duty. In my view, this approach differs substantially from what I considered was occurring nearly two years ago in public discourse about the project. Specifically, information about the project was being spread by those opposed to it, leading to insignificant, sorry, leading to significant and unnecessary distress in our community. As I stated publicly following the last council meeting, my comments back in 2021 were inelegant and clumsy, and I unreservedly apologised if any genuine offence was caused. In addition, at the 2021 council meeting in question, I withdrew the comment. Moving now on to item 5.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice, there are two from last meeting, as listed in the agenda, from Mr Fig and Mr Marsh, we'll take those as, as read. Questions without notice, item 5.4. Before I call on questions without notice, members of the public will note that at the front of the agenda, there is information on the meeting and procedures that we hope is of assistance to those members of the public in the gallery this evening. This is something that we had previously provided, and for quite some time was standard practice, and we're now returned to doing this. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? Thank you. Name and suburb, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Hopefully the microphone's on this time because we've had some problems listening to ourselves on the recordings, but my question is this, Michael Fig from Lordordale. Local government review, I've noticed that Clarence hasn't got any public consultation in that, or has it? That's the first part of the question.
Thank you, Mr Fig. So.
Through you, Mayor. Council has been workshopping a formal response for the local government review, and at the same time, there is public consultation underway across the state that's been undertaken by the Local Government Review Board in relation to the options paper that they released in December of last year. That engagement process at the moment is happening all of February as the next stage of their, of their review.
Mr Fig, Mr Fig, I'm, I'm sorry. According to the meeting regulations, you have one question with that notice, and I'm going to enforce the rules. Thank, thank you.
Well, this is an extension of the first question.
I'm sorry, there's only one bite of the cherry, please take your seat. There's more time, I may exercise my discretion.
That's okay.
Thank you. Mrs Marsh, please. Name and suburb.
Joanne Marsh from BelReeve. I attended the forum today about the Kangaroo Bay Hotel concept design. It was good to see a councillor attending as an observer. The forums are being held all this week. My question is, have any other councillors considered attending as an observer?
Thank you for the question, Mrs Marsh. That, that's a matter for individual councillors, whether they wish to attend it. We did receive a briefing last week from the representative from Shambrood running that community consultation, which was reasonably attended by colleagues, and again, it's, it's a matter for individual councillors to decide if they attend or not, so thank you very much for your question. There being no further questions. Mr Fig, I'll, I'll exercise my discretion if you'd like to ask a second question.
I appreciate the opportunity.
I may regret it.
No, you certainly won't, you've never regretted anything I've asked in this chamber. I've got to think what it was now.
Commentary might be different.
To response, the response that you gave saying council isn't having a public meeting to, in relation to the Elgat review, Local Government Review, there's a meeting tomorrow at Sorrel, so would it be worthwhile us attending that and giving our views at that meeting as a member of the Clarence Council area?
Thank you, Mr Fig.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, I, I would always encourage any member of our community to participate in the consultation regarding Local Government Review as the closest body of government to the people. We think it's important that the review is fully considering all of the community's views in this matter.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the gallery? There being none, we move now on to item number six, deputations by members of the public. Are there any deputations, CEO?
We have one deputation tonight from Mr Graham Geady, read the planning application for 30 Holland Court.
Thank you, Mr Geady, your, your name and, and address, please. Oh, suburb.
Graham Geady, and did you say suburb?
Yes.
Sanford, Crumorne. I'm representing the Herald Church of Christ in relation to the planning development, which has been in process since April 2020, so it's nearly three years, two and a half years from council's point of view. The purpose of us doing any development is to raise funds, nearly a million dollars, to expand the building from the church point of view, community centre, function centre, and for conventions. So the plan on this side is the extension on this part of the building, and Holland Court's down in that direction, just so you've got an idea where we're coming from. So the problem we had was the last notification on the drawings was Thursday, that's the, the last drawings, and these, the original drawing that we put through, which council had approved on the prior council planner, that was their recommendation on what the, what the public open space should be, and we approved that, we changed all our drawings, all our engineering drawings for water etcetera, not to go on POS, to be on private property, because they, they changed all that, without going into that any further. And what's happened is the report we received, I received on Friday, because I was up north, was this is the change for public open space, and so they've put, this is a sealed road across here, so it's sealed road, that's our road, it's a gutted road, so it's curb and gutted, and council want to run that as a public open space through there, and also this part of it up here is the reserve, was the 38 Buckingham Crescent, has been approved in December 2021 as public open space to contact the reserve up in the top, but council want to make us do public open space effectively by right-of-way on this particular section, as well as this particular part of the land where we had it, where there are trees in this section which are, you know, supposedly trees for the swift parrot, that's just said, no, we're changing that totally, that can go into housing. So I just don't understand the planning. I was going to pull this application this afternoon, I rang JMG to do that, and through their consultation with Ross, he decided, not he decided, he recommended that, look, you're probably better to go ahead with it, because the outcome down the track's probably going to be the same through negotiation. I just want to explain, you know, that side of what's happened, and also, like, this part of the land here is our land, council have put their, they've had their pathway on our land for 25 years. Now, there's been, there's been nothing said about that apart from we have it to open space, which we're quite happy to do that, but it just seems that this seems to be such a negative way to go, to put, to put through the middle of our property a right-of-way, which can never be done, we can do nothing with it, and where are our 50 cars going to park? That's all sealed, we've got nowhere to park our cars, they're going to have to park down Holland Court.
Thank you, Mr Geady.
That's just a quick one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is that the only deputation? Thank you. Well, I now advise that in accordance, in accordance with Regulation 25.1 of the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2015, council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act to deal with the following items. First one being 7.1, development application with 30, Balamarah Street, BelReeve, change of use to visitor accommodation. Is there a mover? Thank you, councillor Hume, seconded by councillor Mulder. Councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I see this as a fairly straightforward application, it's a change of use to visitor accommodation in terms of the various amenity issues that the planning scheme deals with. We're talking about a, an accommodation that's going to be booked out as, as a single residence with a single booking, limited numbers of guests. We've, we've also received some further information from the proponent that, you know, they'll have a strictly no-parties rule, so, you know, there, there really won't be any of the sort of, any sort of impacts beyond that that you would expect from a, you know, it continuing to be used as a normal residential property. So, yeah, I support the development.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor Mulder.
May I reluctantly second this because the planning scheme gives me no alternative? This is one of the biggest issues that we have got facing with a rental crisis, with people who can't live, and not a day goes past in the media where we don't have people who can't find a house. I have read the, I have read that, the deputation that was, was, was tabled for us, and all I can say is that the guts of that deputation is that normal tenants aren't looking after, aren't performing the maintenance on the property. Well, I don't know which planet this came from, since when has a tenant been responsible for the maintenance of a property? They may be responsible for the gardens and the lawns and all the rest of it, but if the roof leaks and the hot water cylinder blows up and all the rest of those sorts of maintenance tasks, that is not for the tenant. However, here we have another property going from, in a rental crisis, into short-term accommodation for visitors. We really do need to get on top of this, because if they think that they're not maintaining the property as a problem, you wait until people rent this out for a weekend and have a party, and have 34 cars, 50, 40 cars sitting around in that thing in the middle of a residential suburb, having a raging party all hours of the night, which is perfectly permitted for short-term accommodation, and these are the issues that keep cropping up time and time again. No, we can't do anything about this, but really it is time the government sat down and had a good hard look about turning residential properties into what this is, a commercial operation.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you. Like my colleague, I rise to support the motion, but I also do so on the basis of understanding that we have very little or no alternative under the state government's planning direction in relation to this matter, and it's interesting, and I do acknowledge that short-stay accommodation is not the only contributor to Tasmania's housing crisis, although it is a contributor, and I think it was relevant to note the comments from the chief executive of the Tourism Industry Council recently, Mr Luke Martin, who was recently quoted in the Mercury as stating, I'm certain the decision to remove nearly all restrictions on the proliferation of short-stay accommodation was a colossal mistake. Couldn't agree more with Mr Martin in that respect, and while I'm not saying, as we're seeing in Hobart City Council, who are lobbying for a ban on, a blanket ban on permits, and I understand that they're waiting for a response from the planning commission in relation to their efforts to effectively ban new permits from being issued for entire homes in residential zones, I'm not saying that I entirely agree that that's the way forward, but I think that a lot more thinking needs to be done in this space. What we advocate for clearly is for the government, state government, to be looking very, very seriously at this matter, because it's quite clear from my perspective that from a planning directive perspective, requests for change of use to visitor accommodation, which just in my short time of being here, I have seen so many come through that we don't even get to deal with, it's just dealt with as delegated authority, we aren't provided with sufficient planning tools to enable council to adequately assess these applications, and to this end, I've actually already foreshadowed with the acting CEO that I intend to bring forward a motion on this matter to hopefully the next council meeting, and I believe that this actually taps into the broader issue of the Elgat review, and what I believe will be a really important exercise ahead of us into the future, which is about the heart of the planning debate, that planning does not end up in the hands of unelected bureaucrats, who will, we will see further and further erosion of community input into planning decisions that affect local communities. We need to be very mindful that that is being ripped away, and there's a real chance that that's going to, going to end up going down that pathway, and not having the tools to do the things that we want to do, we need to stand up for those in, in these, these coming months, because if we don't do it now, they'll, you know, we need to claw some back, but it could be a lot worse as well.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and like the previous two speakers, this concerns me as well, and I did bring it up in our agenda briefing on Friday for those people that were there as a real concern, because I'd had a number of people approach me about visitor accommodation that's over one bedroom or a studio, because the amount of parking issues that are created, and again, the parties that are held in these properties, and it is becoming an increasing issue, and I'm very pleased that Deputy Mayor has taken the workload off me with the motion that I suggested at the briefing, and I'd be very happy to see what she brings us and support it. Thank you. But I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I concur with the previous three speakers. This is problematic, it is a substantial-sized property, our planning officers have attempted to address that by putting a condition that it be a single booking, not a multiple booking, so if we're seeing a family that's got 20 kids under the age of 20, then we might be a little bit suspicious, and I hope that we have the tools to enforce that. But I do wonder how many substantial families are looking for short-term accommodation in a, in a quiet suburban street, as opposed to how many substantial families are looking for a place to live and have no alternative. So, it distresses me greatly that we're seeing such a shortfall in the rental market, and yes, it may not be the only factor, but it is certainly one of the most significant factors that we can see, since Airbnb and other short-stay accommodation were introduced, we can see the effect that that's had on the market, and the number of former rental properties that have been withdrawn from the rental market. So, unlike a normal planning application where it's for building something that is pretty hard to undo, this one is, we can undo it. If it, if it turns out to be the social nightmare that we're anticipating, then there are tools that we can use to evoke the permission, I expect, or at least get the planning commission involved. So, yes, we may not have the tools to refuse it, but I would support it very reluctantly.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor Daka, and then councillor Going.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I agree with the previous four speakers in regards to the impact on the housing crisis that this kind of application has. I would also like to state that the rent is too damn high, we are in a cost of living crisis, and that the conversion of long-term rental into short-stay accommodation is only making the cost of living crisis worse, and I really wish that we had, as councillor Ritchie has stated, more controls to actually oppose this kind of development.
Thank you, councillor Daka. Councillor Going.
I'd like to thank everyone else for the comments that they've made, and whilst I wholeheartedly agree, I also want to contribute the fact that I currently have the ability to pay my mortgage, because we have a short-stay accommodation in our front room, so not everybody is profiting from it out of greed, some of us are literally using that income to pay our mortgages, so I just wanted to, you know, make sure that everyone's aware that that's the case, and yes, the ability to have parties obviously exists, however, the user that we use is actually very strict on that, probably a lot more strict than what you would if the house was tenanted regularly, or even the people living there still have the ability to have parties, so I don't think that's certainly a consideration, and whilst I'm aware of the housing shortage, you know, it, it is what it is, and as, as we've said, we're all reluctant to approve it, but under the planning scheme, this is currently, you know, acceptable, so, but I just wanted to add, obviously, my, my personal experience that the benefits to short-stay accommodation, so.
Thank you, councillor Going. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and may I say that I believe in taking a stand on these issues, and I know the previous speakers have in fact stated where they stand on this, and of course, that is their right, as part of this democratic field of debate. May I say from the outset that this came to us because there is an acceptable solution that is not in accordance with the planning scheme. On page 16, it states, and I quote, "Proposal meets the scheme, the scheme's relevant acceptable solutions, with the exception of the following. Clause 8.3.2a1, the proposed visitor accommodation would have a gross floor area of 288 square metres, which exceeds the maximum gross floor area of 200 square metres prescribed by the acceptable solutions." So, under the assessment, we go to the performance criteria, and if we look down the list on page 17, it looks at amongst other things, and 8.3.2p1, visitor accommodation must be compatible, visitor accommodation, and I'm quote, "That particular clause must be compatible with the character and the use of the area, and not cause an unreasonable loss of residential amenity, having regard to privacy, increase in noise adjoining properties, and so on and so forth," and these are standard acceptable solutions that we come up with from time to time. The other point about this is that there has been in the recommendation a clause, and it's only advice. Remember the difference between a condition and advice? In this particular case, a building self-assessment form must be submitted to, for the short- and medium-term visitor accommodation. It's advice, and who's to say that down the track, that the single booking, as is being proposed in this particular recommendation by the officers, will not become a multiple, a multiple booking system? Who's going to police that? The fact of the matter is, there is within this, and it's a very, very tight performance criteria I submit for us to be able to say no to this, but it is there, and we have every opportunity to make an assessment as to whether or not this ought to be approved, and therefore, whether or not it's going to open up a Pandora's Box, which already it has started, as a number of my colleagues have already suggested. The simple fact of the matter is, this is change of use. A change of use means that it's changing from permanent rental, which is what the applicant has stated, the property has been leased for a long-term tenants for the last four years. So, a change of use, and that is why a DA has been submitted, a change of use of the property from permanent rental, in that sense, to short-term, excuse me, short-term accommodation. I would have thought that if there's a change of use, or a change in what has been proposed, and this is obviously what has been submitted by the applicant, that there needs to be some sort of recompense, or something in that rate base, to show or identify a change of use. We have it for commercial properties, in a commercial zone, or within a business, and also any other particular changes which occur as part of a change of use. So, in this particular case, have we, and perhaps I can finish up by asking a question to Mr Lovell, as manager of city planning, Mr Lovell, is it possible that given there has been a change of use, and therefore, would this attract in any way for council to be able to raise a rate that would be reflective of a change of use as part of a DA being submitted? Or would it require some other legislative requirement from the state government to initiate some change in relation to how the rating system would apply to short-term versus a normal residential property?
Mr Lovell.
Through Mr Mayor, I can't answer a question in relation to rates, the planning mover operates separately to that process, it may be something that Ms Merrill can explain.
Ms Merrill.
Um, yes, well, we rate on land use codes, so if the government saw it, caused that to be their own land use code, we could then rate on them, but at the moment, they're all classed as residential, so we only can rate them as a residential property.
Thank you, Ms Merrill, thank you, Mr Lovell. Councillor James, have you concluded?
Yep.
Thank you. Councillor Walker.
But I thank everybody for their contributions, and I would highlight Mr Mayor, councillor Boyne's contribution. The initial essence when Airbnb got up was, you have some spare capacity in your house, here's a way you can make use of it, here's a way you can actually exchange and meet new people, and potentially, you know, go and stay at their places as well. So, that, the original intent, the initial intent when it was set up was around that, and it's sort of morphed into a lot of concentration around standalone dwellings, and that's where a lot of the community tension comes up. There are, within the vicinity of I live, you know, multiple residents that do Airbnb part of their property from time to time, and it is not a cause of duress or stress or, or community constemnation in any way. So, I think that's a really important point to, to make. I think the other point to make is, we are a very sizable city in the Tasmanian context, and if you reflect on our size, which I'm going to get wrong and say sort of around 58,000, count, count the number of hotels and other commercial visitor accommodations. There's not many, there's not many, we're growing, people, people transit, there's, there's many beautiful geographic reasons to stay here, as well as family connections, and we're not, that, that market is not being satisfied or being served, so it, it's hardly a surprise, it's hardly a surprise that, that we're going to see more incentivisation for standalone dwellings to be converted. So, that's not for us sitting right in this cone as a planning authority at the moment, we've got something that is very hard to say no to on any of the grounds that we assess. We need to be really serious in this space about what we can do to facilitate those larger and more, more established commercial accommodation benches, because otherwise, there's going to be more and more of these. So, yeah, bear that in mind, I feel I have to vote for it, and I, you know, the applicant has, has conducted themselves entirely within the rules and the context, they have every right to make this application, and they've chosen to do it within the rules that are set out in front of them.
Councillor Warren, thank you. Are there any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? If being none, I call upon councillor Hume for a reply, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to thank all councillors for their contributions, and like those who've spoken about the, the housing and the rental crisis in Hobart, I, I agree, I sympathise, there are, there are significant problems that need to be addressed. Having, having said that, when it comes to visitor accommodation, this is, you know, there are, there are a number of homes that are converting to visitor accommodation because they're meeting, they're meeting the demand that our visitor economy is providing, and the visitor economy is very significant for Tasmania. Now, I would like to see a, a solution to the housing crisis that also allows us to address the demand for visitor accommodation, and, you know, and provide the jobs and economic activity that goes with the visitor economy. And I've often said that I'd like to see a lot more of the visitor economy in Clarence, because we have some, we have some amazing attractions in our city, and yet, I don't believe that we're getting the, the visitation that we have the potential for and really deserve. So, look, in terms of addressing both those needs, really, I think what we need is, is more residential development. I, I said during the election that, you know, the urban growth boundary, which is what, now 12 years old, needs, needs to be reviewed, and I've heard others make that comment as well.
Councillor Hume, I think you're introducing more, more material. Please get to the, we all understand. Before your colleagues jump and make that point.
But anyway, look, we're, we're all, we're all agreed that this is in compliance with the planning scheme, I, I note the question from councillor James about who's going to police this, well, it's actually the, our planning staff, they, they have the role of making sure that people, when they put forward change of use proposals and they get a permit, that they comply with that permit. Of course, they're not going to go around knocking on doors and saying, you know, how many people are staying in this accommodation, but they can act on a complaint if they receive a complaint and investigate it accordingly, and that's how our, that's how the enforcement of our planning system works. So, that's the answer to councillor James's question, but yes, the development is compliant with the scheme, and I support it.
Councillor Hume, thank you. I'll put the motion by councillor Hume, seconded by councillor Mulder, all those in favour? Those against? Thank you, that's carried. Moving now on to item 7.2, proposed residing in Seven Alt subdivision of 30 Holland Court, Howra, call for a mover. Thank you, councillor Mulder, a seconder? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Mulder.
Mr Mayor, I've looked at this thing and I've been supportive of it, I think it's basically a good idea, good use of the land, it's within the urban growth boundary, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, it was fairly late today that I was contacted, but I was unable to respond or get to meet with the Mr Gead, who I thank very much for his very enlightened deputation. Aside from all the planning issues, in all the time I have been here, involved in planning matters, it has been an utterly consistent theme that we must deal with the application on the terms in which it was submitted. And unless I got something wrong, or unless Mr Gead has got something wrong, that is exactly seems to be the advice. He raised these issues with us this evening, and he was told that he shouldn't withdraw the application, and I'm going to go on his word for this, that he shouldn't withdraw the application, but it would be best to let it run as it is, and then deal with any adjustments and amendments later on. So, my real question is, what is the process where council approves something, a DA on the conditions it was then, and then the planning staff make adjustments to it later on? Unless Mr Gead and I have got our wires crossed, I think that's a very legitimate question.
Rhetorical, or are you looking at?
No. Sorry, it didn't sound very rhetorical to me, Mr Mayor, that is a question to Mr Lovell.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Stop the clock, Mr Lovell.
Through Mr Mayor, perhaps it's useful to consider it, rather than a normal DA, but a planning scheme amendment, which is in effect a three-stage process, the first stage being tonight to approve it, the second stage involves advertising, during which time people may make representations, including the applicant, and those things can be taken into account at the second stage when council reconsideres it, and the third stage is, of course, when the panel, helped by the planning commission, runs a hearing. So, there are a number of opportunities to go where any issues can hopefully be ironed out.
Thank you, Mr Lovell. Councillor Mulder, please stop the clock, please.
Thank you for stopping the clock. It was, yes, it's, under those circumstances, I think we can have some comfort that the, that the, that the suggestions of the, of the deputy, of the deputation we've got tonight will actually be addressed and dealt with in that particular way. But it doesn't, it doesn't help much, though, that someone with a significant development like this, who have done all the hard yards, who've spent all the money, would find themselves at the, at the 11th hour in this particular situation. So, I would commend this particular decision to the council, I hope Mr Gead and the other, and the other deputies, deputies have taken some comfort from the answer that we've got from them, and I look forward to something that meets both the needs of the developer and the planning scheme coming forward.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, I have very little to add, I think, as per the officer's recommendation, and I think it was appropriate and prudent for councillor Mulder to ask for the explanation from our planning staff for the benefit of those involved with this particular application, so as per the officer's recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I did have a lengthy discussion today with Mr Gead, and also with Mr Lovell from council city planner, and there seems to be some sort of, a sort of, what do you call it, communication gap in the system, inasmuch as that, in one instance, there appears to have been that this application did have a number of measures in it, which was agreeable to the applicant, and also to his consulting engineer, and then at the last moment, it seems as though that there has been some changes, and Mr Gead quite clearly pointed those out in his comments earlier this evening. The simple fact of the matter is that this is something that council does have a lot of control over. We can talk about DAs, and who in fact may have delegated authority to pass that in the absence of council coming to a tie decision or otherwise, that there is some means that this council, as a planning authority, can actually take this matter as far as it needs to, and by the very nature of the recommendation, which states amongst other things, agrees to prepare an amendment. And by the very nature of the recommendation, which states amongst other things, agrees to prepare an amendment. Agrees to prepare an amendment. And also, having decided to prepare the amendment, council certifies pursuant to section forty F two B, which was under the old scheme a section, um, forty-three A certificate, which is very similar, uh, in wording, but of course, under the planning scheme, they changed that to section forty F, uh, amongst other things. So this is a very powerful instrument that the council still has, you know, within our realms to this day. And therefore, it, it may be, uh, in my opinion, difficult once this process is in place to try to get those changes that Mr Gied and his, uh, engineer, consulting engineers have, had felt that it was, it was detracting from what they had initially proposed. Uh, on, in the recommendation, it says, um, at D, and that pursuant to section forty Y, and again, we're talking about this joint process of rezoning and a subdivision application, that council agrees to grant a permit for a seven lot subdivision at thirty Holland Court, uh, subject to the following conditions: amended plans, the post, um, public open space lot, et cetera, et cetera. So my question, uh, for you, Mr Mayor, too, Mr Love. Uh, Mr Love, uh, part D seems to stand alone. And therefore, it does tend to have, uh, embodied in, um, D one and two, councils having, uh, agrees to grant this permit. And therefore, there's little chance in my understanding of us trying or the applicant trying to grapple back some of those issues that he raised earlier in this evening. Is there any means by which part D, one and two, is able to be negotiated? Or once it sort of goes to public consultation, that there can be some changes to D? Or is it a fait accompli, given that the wording on D refers to amongst other things, council agrees to grant a permit for a seven lot subdivision?
Thank you councillor James. We'll, if any, stop the clock again, please. Uh, Mr Love.
Through, Mr Mayor, um, this is a combined, uh, amendment and permit. Both of them, uh, are advertised, uh, and so representations may be made on each. And the council will consider chan- can consider changes, will consider changes to either or both of them before it proceeds to the next stage, which is the, um, TPC. So to answer the question, yes, the council has the power to review, review the, uh, the, uh, permit conditions.
Thank you, Mr Love. Councillor James, do you wish to? Thank you very much. Are there any other colleagues wishing to, councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to point out, um, and possibly ask, ask a question. Um, in the associated report, um, I noticed that, uh, under the planning criteria, it says, um, under recreation and open space, plan for an integrated open space and recreation system that responds to existing and emerging needs in the community and contributes to social inclusion, community connectivity, community health and wellbeing, amenity, environmental sustainability and the economy. Um, now, it's my understanding that what, what that's saying is, um, basically, um, you can't just, uh, in a subdivision application, um, and planning scheme amendment, um, pick a, pick an area and say, that's where I want my public open space to be. Um, it has to be something that, uh, you know, responds to the needs of the community, maintains connectivity, et cetera, something that, that complies with those criteria. So, um, I would like to ask, uh, Mr Love, through you, um, is it the case that, um, what the planning officers are trying to achieve by, uh, suggesting this amendment, um, is to make it more compliant with the, uh, criteria on which this application should be assessed and therefore have a greater prospect of success in the planning commission?
Thank you councillor Hume. Stop the clock again, please. Uh, Mr Love.
Through, Mr Chairman, um, perhaps less so, uh, with, with respect to concern about what the commission might say, but more to do with, uh, council's, uh, responsibility when, uh, um, requiring public open space, to take it in a place which best serves the community. It's a council choice about where, when and where it takes open space, rather than it being designated by a developer, if you like. So, um, that's the way it normally works. Um, and the, and the open space and the right of ways that have been proposed in this case, uh, are proposed in order to get maximum access to the reserve at the rear through, through, uh, existing tracks that are there to make it accessible, particularly in the interim until or unless the subdivision to the east is constructed.
Thank you, Mr Love. Councillor Hume, do you wish to continue? Uh, thank you. Are there any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Uh, councillor Walker, thank you.
We've been attempting the briefing and by, by Zoom as best I could. It is quite a radical change that's occurred, if you like, from when the, uh, the packs were issued to, to where we find ourselves today. I mean, it's, it's, it's profound. And, uh, you know, there is a process that, that occurs, whatever is passed tonight, if it's the original version or what's actually the one we're discussing now. Um, you know, quite, quite frankly, I'm not particularly enamored, enamored with the triangle. And, uh, I don't know, you know, about its, its public merit, but that, that's, that's not for now. I think that's something that would probably come up in the, in the, in the debate. So I, uh, I will listen intently to any more commentary that comes around this table, um, if there's any. And I will listen very intently as the mover sums it all up. But, uh, I think I'm foreshadowing if this motion is unsuccessful, that I'll move, uh, the, what, what was originally presented to us in our packs and our briefing packs that we received on Wednesday.
Thank you councillor Walker. Are there any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? If being none, councillor Mulder, write a reply, please.
Um, I thank colleagues for their contribution. Um, I must say that, um, actually that little triangle in the bottom right-hand corner, um, is actually one of the great saviors of this particular proposal. And it needs to remain that way because that is the link without, without which the public open space at Buckingham Drive doesn't connect to the reserve. And we've had a previous debate where, um, when we were talking about some of the, the land at Buckingham Drive, where this was part of that connection. Because we've got two pieces that meet in a, basically in, in a crosshairs. Um, and yet, no point at which you could move from one to the other without this triangle. So this triangle to me seems to be one of the most beneficial, uh, the, 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 the great, uh, contribution. The public open space on the other side, I think, is somewhat problematic. I thank Mr Love for his response, but I cannot help but make the observation, it would have been much neater had this been sorted prior to us having to debate it. So that what went out to the community was something that the developer was happy with. Because here we have the situation where a proponent is about to lodge what used to be called an objection to their own development application. That seems to me to be a very strange way of going about the business. Secondly, what the proponent wants isn't going to be advertised. So it then really begs the question about if what being advertised comes back as something different, shouldn't we be re-advertising it so the public knows what we're going to do? Because, you know, um, it, it just seems to me, it's a very messy, um, I hope it can sort itself out to the satisfaction of both the developers and the community. Um, and I'm sure that it will be. I just find it a very messy way of going about business. But anyway, I commend the motion.
Thank you councillor, uh, councillor Mulder. I'll put the motion moved by councillor Mulder, seconded by deputy mayor councillor Ritchie. All those in favour? Against? That's carried. Thank you. Moving now on to item eight, reports of officers. There's item eight point one, there's no petitions table at the previous council meetings to be determined. Moving on to item eight point two, asset management. The draft Victoria Spinard and Queen Street master plan community consultation. I'll call for a mover, the motion. Thank you councillor Walker. Is there a seconder? Thank you councillor Kennedy. Councillor Walker.
Look, it, uh, does give me a degree of satisfaction to be advancing this along, uh, something I think has been a very long time coming, perhaps since, uh, my initial vote against the landscape plan of twenty-twelve. Uh, is it, uh, the, the euphemism that's been attached to the document before us is visionary? It is that. It is a, a significant and scaled project, if you like. It's an iconic project. Um, this isn't saying this is what is going to occur here. This is saying, this is the starting place of something that could occur here. The end vision is likely to significantly change from that. It is a quantum of funds that may come up in the debate that will follow us, that is something that will be of concern to some. I think it'd be really important to note that whatever we finally end up with, um, it's likely to be something that is probably staged. But it is also something to give serious consideration to borrowings for. If something like this isn't, i- is brought forward to several years instead of a eighteen-year project, then I, as a rate payer, will be paying the interest for the money that we borrow for it. But my family would be enjoying the fruits of the amazingly increased amenity. So, uh, I thank the local community in particular's forbearance. This has been a lot longer than, um, than what could have happened in twenty-nineteen, had we approved that plan then. But I think this is doing a lot more, um, a lot more due respect to, to the, uh, amazing nature of this site. So, uh, as I said, this is, this is moving a process along. This is finalising nothing. This is opening, if you like, consultation and I, uh, seek colleagues' support on that fact.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor Kennedy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Nothing really more to add because councillor Walker summed that up beautifully, uh, along with a number of colleagues that are around the table. We met with community over a number of times. And in fact, they did actually ask us to slow down the process and let's get it right. All I would do is remind colleagues that this is a draft plan, go out for consultation and also encourage the community to have their say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hume.
A very quick contribution. Mayor, I'm, I'm very pleased that the plan, um, has a solution to having a war memorial plonked in the middle of a road.
Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Mulder.
I will rise to point out that I'm deeply offended that a memorial to, um, to the British Empire who fought the Bull War against my, um, ancestors, um, should take such a pride of place. Um, I think, um, the crown of statues has got nothing to worry about compared to what I think should happen there. Now, seriously, that war memorial should perhaps be relocated because that particular spot, given the traffic flows in that particular area, is the only point at which you can do a U-turn in order to get back onto Cambridge Road without going through already crowded and narrow and inappropriate streets. So from a traffic survey, I would, I would say that, um, whether the memorial's in the middle there or whether it's consigned to some memorial park for all the other, um, cultural warriors, um, is really a, a, a point. But the point is that there needs to be the capacity to turn around there. This plan doesn't provide it. I know it's going out to community consultation. But let's go back to these master plans. Here we have a master plan that I think at one stage was costed in the region of ten to twelve million dollars. Ten to twelve million dollars to fix up footpaths that aren't broken, to create streetscapes and things that, you know, it would be nice to have and great. But while the people who use Pass Road are blowing out their tyres on, on, on potholes, while people down in Ropey are having awful problems with the, with the, with the roads and the access and the footpaths and all the streetscaping and all the landscaping, let's get the Hollands community up to a su- up to a suitable standard before we go gilding the lily. And that really is what this is about. Um, this is about taking, yes, an iconic part of our, of our city, a part that we tried under the planning scheme to get, to get a special status because of its history and its value and all the things we talk about now, how important it is, and the planning commission basically said, go away. So if they say go away, we should be taking some lead from them occasionally. And maybe we should be thinking about this. Do we really need to have this draft plan? And we all say, oh, well, we're not going to do it next week. We'll do it over time or we'll wait for the state government to decide that Franklin's a marginal electorate and we need to throw some money into the eastern shore, right? And so we have this master plan. By the time we get to funding these works, pass some little bits and pieces around the edges, the master plan will be out of date, Mr Mayor. And we'll have to redo it again because the world's changed and the standards have changed and the people's requirement for amenity has changed. So to a little bit, um, I'm reminded of, um, what, what, um, someone once said about the Uganda Railway. And you may, what it will cost, no words can express what its object is, no brain can suppose. Where it will start from, no one can guess. And it goes on for a while. And in spite of the, uh, the premier, the, uh, British Prime Minister of the day, it is clearly naught but a lunatic line. Now, I suppose I'm being now, uh, a little bit facetious, but really, are we about doing that or are we about getting the basics right throughout the city? There are streets that need to be paved. There are places where there are horrible situations where people are going on old broken roads that council won't fix, even though they're on the council's property. Because at the time of subdivision in the nineteen thirties or forties, we didn't require the developer to build them up to a standard. And now they sit falling apart and no one will take some responsibility. Really, I think it's a question of priorities. Uh, I think this plan goes into far too much detail and it's creating expectations that we will be unable to meet.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge particularly what you have said councillor Mulder, and I understand where you're coming from. However, master plans are critical. They're critical that the community has had an opportunity to engage. But more importantly, they're actually critical for council officers to know where to direct their work.
Councillor Hunter, thank you. Deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you. Uh, I had a plan to speak on this motion, but, um, now I feel slightly compelled. So I wanted to, uh, take the time to congratulate those who've actually put together this, uh, plan that will go out for consultation. And there is, isn't there an old saying, you know, um, fail to plan, plan to fail? Um, I think that's relevant here. And I, I don't think, um, whilst appreciating completely, um, what our colleague, um, councillor Mulder's had to say about, you know, gilding the lily, gold paving, whatever you want to say in relation to Bell Reef. Having lived in many of the suburbs across, uh, this beautiful municipality in which we live, um, there's no doubt, there are some areas that, um, are not, um, as, as generously looked after as others. I don't think we doubt that. But I don't think that that's what this is about. This is, this is about going out to consultation to the community on a plan. I'm not certain that, um, I would argue either, that it's setting false expectations. This is about, um, consultation only at this stage. So in, in reality, priorities are set around this room. Um, where, where council decides to spend its funds in relation to infrastructure and other matters, um, that's our job to be here, making sure we can do the best we can to fight for those, those suburbs and those people that we feel aren't up to the standard that they ought to be. So we need to be thinking about that. I take, as I said, as, um, uh, councillor Hunter has said, totally appreciate where councillor Mulder's coming from. But I actually don't think it's quite the right argument to be mounting in respect of just this consultation. Um, and, um, I congratulate those who've put the plan together.
Thank you councillor Ritchie. Uh, councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And may I say from the outset that when this first came to council, and we can go back to two thousand nineteen, it was merely, uh, a review of the Victoria Spinard and Kangaroo Bluff landscape. It didn't go to the extent to which now it's proposing. And, uh, councillor Mulder has made a, an interesting point because some of us who've been on council for some time now know that there is a group of people, residents in outlying areas, in Seven Mile Beach or, um, in the, uh, other areas of, um, South Arm, et cetera, Crumorne, that have real concerns about their lifestyle and the way the funds are going to come from for their in and for their inundation seems to be lapping at their doorways. And in this particular case, the whole thing has been, the net has been cast far and wide and now to incorporate a Queen Street or part of the draft Victoria Esplanade and Queen Street master plan. And that's taking us into the Bel Reve Beach. Chapman Street has been identified in here as some, an area that may need to be, a junction with Victoria Esplanade as one-way in certain parts. There's more landscaping on Victoria Esplanade as opposed to what now, and we've got those car parking issues which don't seem to be going away. So, look, really and truly, if you're looking at a plan, a master plan, then we really need to not send out false expectations to the public that they may feel that their area in Chapman Street or Queen Street is going to be addressed in the short term, when in fact, it's already been identified that this particular plan is far-reaching. It hasn't been identified what's going to be done when, only that Victoria Esplanade may be the first cab-off rank, and therefore it may get some preference over development as distinct from some of these other areas of Chapman and Queen Street. I think it's too much. I think it's too much, and we had this debate earlier on in the piece, and it's okay to say that it's going to be looked at in the long term. But you just have to realise that this is a small part of the cake as far as allocation of funds is concerned, and there are people outside in these suburbs that will have nothing. Now, this project, at last estimates, was going to cost in excess of 10 million. That's over the longer term, that's part of the master plan. 10 million dollars. Okay, some of the critics may say to me that, "Oh, no, it might only be 250,000 or 300,000 that was initially proposed for Victoria Esplanade and their landscape works." That was the number that we had actually decided upon before this whole thing was thrown up in the air and said, "Let's all go for the big take and let's all go for the cut." I will not support this. It has changed the format, the blueprint that we established for Victoria Esplanade, and it's also provided false expectations to people, not only within this area of Kangaroo Bay Bluff, but also those persons who are entitled for their fair share of the council cut-up of allocation of funds, and they will get nothing out of this. And we're going to have some issues when this comes to council as part of the budget, because if this motion goes through, and it will, for obvious reasons, because most of the people who have spoken to it are in support of it, then there's going to be an expectation that there will be some funds that will be allocated in the budget, and they will obviously take preference, or precedence, I should say, over some of these other requests for funding, stormwater, upgrade roads, pipe clay, Esplanade, et cetera, which is underwater and it's a basic disgrace for this council to let that go for so long. So, look, in summary, Mr Mayor, it is too big, it's too expensive, and it's also sending false expectations to the people to think that they will have their share of the cake in the short term, whereas initially, when we decided on this some few years ago, it was a smaller area to landscape and do the area within the Victoria Esplanade, not gold plate the rest of the council area.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Darko?
With respect, councillor James, this is not a budget proposal, and it does not indicate that this is going to take priority over fixing up stormwater, fixing up urgent matters over potholes in areas that, as pointed out, need a lot of work. My view on this is that it's important that we look at things holistically, and that's why having the entirety of Bel Reve in the same master plan, which can evolve over time, is important, particularly with the master plan being associated with the related area of the city heart. It's important that we look at this area, which is so important to the core of our city with care, and that we address it in a holistic manner, as mentioned. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, councillor Darko. Councillor Walker?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank councillor Darko for her comments, which are similar to what I was going to say. This is a plan, and I appreciate also councillor Hunter's comments about it's important to plan, we're not committing to anything. I was pleased to see that one of the main points in the scope was that it has to be accessible to all, and that should be fundamental to any planning that we do. I do notice in the concept drawings that there are a number of stairs. I can't see what the alternatives are there. I would encourage during the consultation and during the feedback phase to highlight those areas of accessibility, to make sure there is equal access, whether it's people who work, use mobility aids, parents pushing strollers, people who broke their leg last week, whatever the issue is, making sure that it is accessible to all. That might include that stretch of Bel Reve Beach, which currently is not accessible to anybody who's using those sorts of aids. So I do support going out to consultation, which is all this is, and look forward to the results and what the community feels about the process so far.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I will be supporting this. There are a couple of things, I guess it had been mentioned, that made me think. Yes, councillor James is right, when we first started this, four, four and a half years ago, yes, we did look at a really small area, but all the consultation that we've done to date says, "Expand it, think about it," as councillor Darko said, "think about it holistically for the whole area." And now that we're doing City Heart, it makes no sense to not do these things together and think about how we can look at this in the big picture. But also, I live in the suburbs, I live down one of council's gravel roads, trust me, I know all about potholes. But if you look at the report, there are over 65,000 walkers and bike users who use this between May and August 2020 when we had the counter there. That's a lot of people using this area, not just the people who live in it. So obviously, it's a really important area for our whole community and one that we should plan carefully for and get on with.
Thank you, councillor Chong. No other contributors? Right of reply. Thank you, councillor Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank everyone for their contributions, some of which I hardly agree with, but that's the great thing, they do inform the decision-making process, and people will get to have their say one way or the other when the vote is cast very soon. I appreciate Alderman Warren's comments around accessibility, and I think we've highlighted early in the piece with this, and I hope it doesn't get lost, the potential for inclusive tourism with this area. So that is around accessibility, but also there are things we can do around neural divergence and other things that can really enhance and just make this incredibly, you know, an incredible experience for people that use it. Yes, it might also make it a project of interest, you know, for state and federal governments to potentially get involved with, and I think we should be looking for those partnerships. And I think what, the calibre of what is proposed and will adapt is far more, far more exciting or far more inviting for that sort of potential further support. They are big quantities of funds, as has been mentioned. First point is that the budget is a matter for council and the prioritisation is a matter for us. So that's one point, and it's not new material, as I said before. Something like this, I think we should be very open to looking at borrowing for, because as I said, if that is something that is available to my family, I'm quite comfortable with a fraction of interest being included in my rates for things like this to be enjoyed now. I also want to point out, I don't think it's about, there's any, it's going to be building false expectations, it's trying to say, here is what, this is trying to stop surprises, it's trying to say, yeah, over the course of time, this is what we are likely to have here. Things, doing things, surprisingly, has a cost to it. It was a seven-figure cost to upgrade Bel Reve Beach Park. It was our first accessible playground. Now, does it fall short of the platinum experiences and ways that accessible playgrounds are truly designed here? But it was a really strong start in that space, and it is a drawcard to that area, and, you know, time marches on. But when I first got onto council, I got told that moribund, miserable, shade, shade-drenched excuse, which is those little bits of decaying plastic bits up at the other end, the old original playground was perfectly fine, that's what people should, you know, expect and enjoy. Rubbish, rubbish. We've got something there that the community is generally proud of now, we've got something there that draws those of us that live further away to go and experience, and those that live outside Clarence to experience. And I think a similar thing, only on a much bigger scale, will be what will be delivered if we can see the master plan reach its fruition. Seek your support.
Thank you, councillor Walker. I'll put the motion move by councillor Walker, seconded by councillor Kennedy. All those in favour? Thank you. Against? So, carry. Moving now on to item 8.3, there are no financial management items. On to 8.4, 8.4.1 under governance, natural resource management committee land and coast care grants. Call for a mover, please. Thank you, councillor Warren, seconded by councillor Kennedy. Thank you, councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is always a tough year where we get to give out assistance grants to the many land care and coast care groups that operate throughout our municipality, without whom we would not be able to manage our resources. So terrific volunteer groups that when they put in a submission, put in the volunteer equivalent of the number of hours that they will be putting in, in response to the number of dollars that we'll be giving, and it's absolutely mind-blowing to see how many hours these volunteer groups are putting in. I wasn't involved in this particular round of allocations, but I have in the past, and I know that our very knowledgeable team goes through them and looks to make sure that they're in line with the criteria, and so I have great confidence in recommending this distribution.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor Kennedy, please.
Just very briefly, Mr Mayor, I'd like to congratulate the committee and say congratulations also to the volunteers. Where would we be without our volunteers?
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Hume?
Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. First of all, the One Community Together grant, just shy of $1,000 for a project that's receiving over $13,000 worth of in-kind support, that's a pretty huge multiplier, so, you know, great value for money there. But I also noticed that the amount of grants applied for actually fell short of the amount of funding allocated and that there'll be some funds carried forward to next year. So I'm hoping that we can encourage, and I know, you know, land care groups, as far as I understand, land and coast care groups, I should say, appear to be the sector of our, you know, of our community, our not-for-profit community, that have the most number of individual groups throughout Tasmania and possibly also in our municipality. So I'm sure there's a lot more potential for other groups to get involved in this, so I'll be having a chat to my father who's involved in Friends of Lemire Point and encouraging them to apply the next time around, and possibly declaring a conflict of interest when it comes up for council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Councillor Warren, right of reply. Thank you. I'll put the motion move by councillor Warren, seconded by councillor Kennedy. All those in favour? So moved, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving now on to item 8.4.2, the review of council code of conduct, noting that there's a revised recommendation provided by the acting CEO as circulated, that's up on the, will be up on the board shortly, that coming from our Friday agenda brief and the suggestion that there would be, break the motion up into part A and part B. It is, as it's displayed here. I'll call for a mover of this revised recommendation, please. Thank you, councillor Warren, seconded by councillor Kennedy. Councillor Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We now have two parts here. The first part is that we continue to adopt the model code of conduct. We know it's not perfect, it falls short in a number of areas, particularly in having any sort of mechanism for mediation, and it has been used very much as a, it's been used appropriately in the past, and things have ended up going to the tribunal at great expense to council to settle what I would consider to be personal matters. So we know that it's not appropriate, but we do know that the local government review is looking at a much strengthened and more appropriate model. So, given that that's in the not-too-distant future, it makes sense just to, for us not to rewrite this one when we know it's going to be superseded very shortly. The second part, Clarence City councillor's statement of expectations was something that we devised late in the last term of council, and I think is a useful addition to the code of conduct because it's much more prescriptive and applies to the behaviour. So things like, there's behaviour that fails below misconduct but is still unreasonable, including things like rude, loud or insensitive remarks, swearing, shouting, name-calling, or generally ranting out loud about something, repeatedly raising the same issue, not letting go despite the matter being addressed, continually making jokes about a person or singling out one person for remarks more often than others in a group. Now, I'm not going to go on, but those are all things that I've seen happen in this chamber, perhaps more last term, but not insignificantly this term, and there are things that have already happened this term that have made me uncomfortable and that I will be calling out if I see again. So by having this here in front of us today, it does give us a chance to reflect on our behaviour, and I thank the mayor for starting this term by saying that we all need to bring our best selves to meetings. And so I do urge colleagues, when you're voting on this, and hopefully you have already read this, to really carefully reflect on these things and think, have I done something that could be interpreted in this way and can I do better? So I think it always helps to aim high and to meet those expectations of what we consider is a good standard of behaviour. So I do urge councillors to support both sections of the motion.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Before I call on councillor Kennedy, what I should have said, colleagues, was that I will put both A and B separately in this item, if you like. So I'm sorry I wasn't clear on that, but I think most of you knew what I meant. So the second to councillor Kennedy, please.
No, thank you, Mayor.
They're not two separate motions, but so the debate is about...
Sure. Yeah, thank you, councillor Mulder. The debate is the debate. I will put A and B separately, as we discussed on Friday. Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Nothing from you?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone else wish to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yes, this is one of those decisions where we can debate it all night long and we can have our different views about it and all the rest of it, except the Local Government Act requires us to adopt the code of conduct. This should have actually been a procedural motion, because we have no option under the law but to do so. I do take some disagreement with the statement of expectations. It is idealistic, but it's also so prescriptive and so much of it is a judgment call. And I think there's been plenty of examples of, in this chamber, where we've stepped over the line of what we think is acceptable conduct, and, but it's not unusual that in the heat of debate, the passion of politics, that some of these things are stepped over. In fact, if we look at the parliament that opposes these things on us, and you look at some of the question times, for some, it's a badge of honour to be thrown out of the parliament. And the fact is, is that to manage these with idealistic prescriptions of behaviour and then say, "Well, they are ideals," well, they're either prescriptive or they're ideals, and I'm happy with a statement of ideals, but I'm concerned when it starts to become prescriptive. All have sinned and fall short of the glory for sure, but I think we're getting to the stage where, and I've said this previously, so I'll repeat the exercises, it will be a very, very boring council if we're all required to form an affinity circle, hold hands and sing kumbaya, and I'll go to the point now of where the code of conduct is at the point now where I'm not allowed to publicly disagree with a decision that this council... I'm not allowed to publicly disagree with a decision that this council made in public, even though I might have voted against it, because somehow or other that is bringing disrespect on the council. And I just look at the comments that the mayor, that the general manager, the CEO of Hobart made in response to a decision of council to cease their committee work and go into private workshops, whereas they were in the habit of having open committee meetings. Um be that fine or not, that's not the point, but when certain councillors stood up, or aldermen stood up and publicly criticised that decision, the chief bureaucrat wrapped him on the knuckles in the media and said, they've got to be careful, they're not reflecting discredit on the council. So is that the sort of system that we want? Or do we want the capacity for people to stand up? Reg Watson summed it up today, the noted local historian who I rarely agree with, but he said that one of the things that he's noticed over the journey of his lifetime is that there is increasingly mores, social mores are starting to limit the capacity of people to express alternative ideas because someone else might find them offensive. And it's the question of what we find offensive. Some people find one thing offensive, some people find other things offensive, some people find sarcasm offensive. It'd be a terrible thing if we couldn't engage in a little bit of sarcasm or, dare I say, self-deprecating humour. So that's my concern with the state of expecta- about the code of expectation, uh the um statement of expectations and why I would not support that. I'm forced to support the code of conduct by the law, but I am not forced to ascribe to this nirvana state.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor Dacke.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um this is a workplace and respectfully, the heat of politics is not an acceptable excuse for causing distress to others. It is a privilege to be here. It is a privilege that we should treat with the respect that it is due. And I would say that parliament is not exactly a respectful environment that we should be seeking to emulate. It's particularly important to me personally um to have things like not having personal attacks in that statement of expectations. As a member of a marginalised community who is subject to public vitriol daily within the media, I find it very, very important that in order to have a safe workplace, that kind of behaviour is ruled as unacceptable and will be grounds for being expelled from the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dacke. Councillor Goine.
Thank you, everyone speaking. I just wanted to contribute the fact that um my experience on council thus far as a newly elected member has been nothing but positive. Um and I hope it continues that way. And I think that, you know, so far we've managed to be respectful. Um it may just be in my experience I haven't witnessed anything untoward um or the fact that I'm very difficult to offend, so. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goine. Councillor Chong, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I absolutely cannot condone a place where being thrown out is a badge of honour. And I think it's really important in this statement of expectations that we set those rules out. We should be able to have, of course, robust discussions, but we don't need to swear at each other or shout at each other or go on about things or vilify people to do that. Because if you can't get your point across with passion without being rude personally, what are you doing here?
Thank you councillor Chong. Councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I just thought it was interesting to note that the um particular clause that uh councillor Mulder chose to focus on in making his contribution um about reflecting on the reputation of the council is actually in the code of conduct and not the statement of expectations. Um but I I don't see that as being consistent with simply having a disagreement with the decision of the council. Um you know, disagreeing with a decision of the council, you can still be respectful without reflecting on the council's reputation. What I would see is reflecting on the council's reputation is if you said, made a statement like, for example, um uh you know, the place is completely corrupt or, you know, that that's that's the sort of thing that I'd see as reflecting on on the reputation of council, not disagreeing with the decision.
Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Walker.
Thank you. Um unfortunately, you can't legislate for common sense. Uh I think this is in many ways trying to legislate for common courtesy. Hopefully, it just is something that is a dead document, not a living document as far as us requiring it. I I really do. I I think that uh in in most cases, just just common courtesy indecency means that we're not going to have to fall back on on what's required in this document. Um I think uh I think previous speakers' contributions, um my understanding, or maybe my confabulation, is that um we can actually politely e- um express dissent in in the council decision, not not in 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 as much as saying, um I didn't support that and these were my reasons why, or these are my concerns. I don't I don't notice uh and I haven't heard that such such public utterances would be uh muzzled and uh I don't I don't expect that to be the case. But by the same token, um there's a way that you can uh raise your raise your issues um that doesn't bring dispute onto council. And I think everyone around this table is more than capable of doing so.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, as I mentioned in the prior council, I have had and I did have and I didn't vote in in favour of the um councillor's statement of expectations because I found that it was being too broad-based. It was sort of dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And that by the very nature means that there's a lot of this stuff in here that is, I would have thought, being capable people and working in the best interests of the community in the Clarence City Council, that it goes and shouldn't be vastly unsaid. And in this, a council's statement of expectations, when that came to council, probably as a result of an anger management issue which came up in this place and and it set in train this particular uh approach to this document which was approved by council and I voted against at the time for the very reasons that I'm addressing at this point in time. The simple fact of the matter is that just picking one or two uh on page one of the council's statement of expectations, repeatedly raising the same issue, not letting go despite the matter being addressed now. Okay, some people are a bit dogged in their particular ability and therefore they may feel that they need to probably repeat that because that's their personal view and uh and intention. And also on page two, it says, and I quote, um ensure that their behaviour is appropriate at all times in accordance with council values. Now, look, again, why do we need to spell that out? We've got a code of conduct here that's basically been uh worked through reasonably well. And I might add that Martin Healy, the director of local government, and we've all received a copy of that letter.
It's actually Mr Matthew Healy.
Oh, sorry. What did I say, Mr Mayor? Uh Martin Healy.
Read carefully that, please.
Yeah, thank you. Matthew Healy um made it quite clear and it was addressed to mayors, deputy mayors and councillors throughout the the broad brush approach to this uh as twenty-nine councils. So look, the simple fact of the matter is, look, we've got this code of conduct in place. It's going to obviously be refined and and also added to, subtracted from over the course of time, but I don't think it's necessary to have this particular council statement of expectation tagging along. And I'm pleased that we separated these two out and and I think that's important because at the end of the day, okay, it'll go ahead because I think the numbers around the table are there, but nevertheless, it'd be interesting to see whether the other councils or um Matthew Healy, thank you, is in fact supportive or in his representation or uh comments that will go to the review or to this particular next phase of the code of conduct, will it be enhanced and incorporated within? I'll wait and see, but I will support uh A, but I will not support B.
Thank you councillor James. Anyone else wish to make a contribution? Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you. Um I'll be supporting uh motion. Um I don't think that um we can ever stop trying to improve. And I think that's what this is all about generally. Um the comparison between this place and another place is wildly different, particularly given that that place uh has privilege attached to its operations um and indeed sets the legislation that governs the operation of what goes on here at council. So um but having said that, um I had the pleasure of never being ejected while I was in the other place in all the years I was there. Uh and in fact, I don't think any legislative councillors ever were while I was there. Certainly, that tends to be more in the domain of the cart and thrust of the House of Assembly. But uh I hope also that 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 our parliaments are heeding uh not only the internal desires but the external community expectation that we're actually more about getting on with the business of what they want us to do on their behalf, rather than the theatre, um the performing seals um that we might sometimes see in other places. And I have to um share the comments that were made by councillor Goine, that I'm pleased to say that in my short time serving on the council, um it's been entirely pleasant. Uh I enjoyed the robust discussion and um I've enjoyed uh the relationships that I've been building with my colleagues around this place. And I uh hope likewise, um I think councillor Walker's comment, hope that uh these documents aren't documents that we have to revisit for the purposes of which they're established um and that we continue to get on and do good things as elected members.
Thank you councillor Ritchie. There being none for councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um I read this document when I was newly elected in November and it actually gave me great comfort knowing that this was there. And even though it seems obvious to many of us, it just gives us peace of mind. So it's been really interesting to hear the debate around the room that it might be too prescriptive in some people's eyes. I certainly haven't read it that way and I will be supporting both A and B.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Warren, right of reply.
Thank you. And thank you, colleagues, for your comments. It seems like there are no issues with uh part A. Certainly, we have to have a mode of uh a code of conduct and we're going to just carry this one forward. Regarding the statement of expectations, yeah, it'd be great if we didn't need it. Um I think a lot of us in the last term wished we'd had one earlier that we could have referred to and by creating one late in the piece, it was kind of our gift to the next council to say, let's start the way that we mean to go on. And it's great that some of you haven't had negative experiences and long may that continue. Um let's not use the standard of behaviour in parliament as the standard. Um that's definitely um not what we see happening here. And I totally reject the suggestion that you can't have robust debate unless you can call people names and rant and swear. Um I've been really enjoying this term of council and the standard of the debate. It has been um very refreshing. Um there there's nothing in the statement of expectations that actually would disallow any of the things councillor Mulder listed. Um there's nothing there. Um you know, the I think that if you want to be sarcastic or self-deprecating humour through you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Warren.
Councillor Mulder is perfectly at liberty to do that. Uh there's nothing in the statement of expectations that does that. But if you were to be sarcastic to a particular councillor on a regular basis, then I think we would be right to call that out. And I would encourage all my council colleagues to call out behaviour if it makes you uncomfortable or you see it making somebody else uncomfortable. And I had a really interesting discussion with councillor Bloomfield, Alderman Bloomfield from Hobart City Council on Thursday, um in that she has encouraged the um four of the new councillors to take that approach, given them a cheat sheet of things that they should not accept, you know, the standard that you walk past is the standard you accept. And she was really pleased to see that they were actually acting on and saying, no, that that's not the way that we behave here. Let's hope we never have to use it, but let's have it that so that we can refer to it if we need to in the future. So I commend both parts of the motion to my colleagues.
Councillor Warren, thank you. Colleagues, I'll put um part A of the motion, and that is the council continues to adopt the model code of conduct, noting that the future of local government review will include a review of the model code of conduct. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Moving now on to part B of the revised recommendation, the council continues to adopt the recently established Clarence City Council councillors' statement of expectations, given its relevance to the model code of conduct. All those in favour? Those against? That's carried. Colleagues, thank you. Moving now on to item uh eight point four point three, closure of public footway for Queen Street Bellarive. I'll call for a second to please. Councillor Mulder, thank you. Councillor Goine.
A mover perhaps.
A mover, so don't say seconded. Boy, you jumped so early, you got me unaware. So the mover is councillor Mulder, the seconder is councillor Goine, thank you. Councillor Mulder.
Uh yes, Mr Mayor, um this is one of those really obvious ones. Um Longon has the um idea that um people should be able to walk through school grounds without being challenged or without anyone knowing that they were there. Um I would think that this is a very sensible thing. Um I must say that I can't remember um having used it myself and I don't think there are too many people who actually do use it. Um there's a couple of observations. It's interesting to see that um slide going straight over the pathway. Um and all all might I say is that um the only observation I can make about the pictures, and I refer to the last one on just ahead of page two oh three, um that Bellarive key has got to be the ugliest building we've ever seen. And can we please not repeat the mistake on Kangaroo Bay?
Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor Goine.
I just want to reiterate what councillor Mulder has said. As someone who does actually walk through that area fairly regularly and specifically avoid um that public footway, because why would I walk through the middle of a school grounds? Um I think it's, yeah, about time, so I strongly support the motion.
Thank you councillor Goine. Uh any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, councillor Mulder, right of reply? Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving now on to item nine, motions on notice, and there are nil. So then moving on to item ten, councillors' question time, uh questions uh on notice, uh there are nil there as well. Answers to questions without notice from the previous council meeting have been listed in the agenda. Moving on to ten point four, questions without notice, and councillor Kennedy, I'll start with you, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Who did direct this one to?
Directed through to me and I'll make a call. Thank you.
Okay, and uh I I just want to find out who actually owns the land at thirteen Dart Lane Rugby. Is it a council property or is it privately, in private hands?
We might have to take that one on notice unless, Sir Yeo, you're aware.
I'm looking around, I don't think, yeah, we might have to take that one on notice.
Give you a second bite of the cherry.
No, because it relates to that, so I'll leave that.
Thank you. We'll really give it to get an attitude tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um we've recently had a speed trailer at North Terrace in Noradale.
Sorry, recently had a what's it?
So we've recently had a speed trailer at North Terrace in Noradale following complaints from the residents about the speed of vehicles coming through there. Um have we got the results of the of the information yet and what is the proposal to be done about it?
Thank you councillor Chong. Mr Graham.
Uh through, Mr Mayor. Following the petition, the speed trail has been placed on North Terrace twice and each time we've we've sort of during the the time the speed trailer was there, we've seen a reduction in the traffic um speed. Uh we'll um download some of the information and summarise it to the council. Uh the next stage in terms of any traffic calming through there is through the master plan process, which will consider, uh council will consider through the budget process coming up.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Chong, any second one? Councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you, Mayor, could I ask for an update on the consultation process on um Kangaroo Bay, uh whether we've had significant or interest on our council survey?
Thank you, certainly may, um Chief Executive Officer.
Thank you. Uh through you, Mayor, yes, we've had significant interest in the survey, um many, many hundreds of responses uh and officers are already starting to try to trawl through the verbatim comments to be able to analyse that in time to give it to council for its consideration uh around sixth of March at the same time as Sham Broad proposes to bring back their consultation uh for council's consideration.
Uh councillor Dacke.
Mr Mayor, I was just wondering if we could have an update on the status, including any budget allocations for the development of off-leash greyhound recreational areas.
Thank you. Uh Mr Graham.
Uh through, Mr Mayor. From memory, a briefing went to the council that we're considering um the current location compared to the others, but I will, other possibilities, but I'll follow up with staff and um send an update to council.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Dacke, any other? Thank you. Councillor Goine.
I just wanted to ask if there was any further updates about the land sale or the acquisition of the land through through the defence on uh blank Cambridge Road?
Thank you councillor Goine. Um Sir Yeo.
Uh thank you. Through you, Mayor, I'll have to take that one on notice and come back to you. Thank you. Through you, Mayor. I'll have to take that one on notice in coming back here.
Yeah. Councillor Walker.
Thank you. First one is something that we have been made aware of through local residents' concerns, which is, I guess if you like, repeated fire alarms going off in commercial properties. One in particular, I'd just like to spell out what is council's role when something like this is happening on a regular basis? And does that role change somewhat if council was in a leasing arrangement with said facility?
Thank you councillor Walker. Sir Yeo or Mr Graham for that one? Or on notice?
Yeah, I might have to review, Mayor. My understanding is that does not change our role in terms of the enforcement of the act in relation to noise pollution, but I will come back with further information in regards to the question.
Thank you. Miss Shaye, do you wish to add anything at all to that? All right, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Walker, your second question, please.
Yeah, and I'm happy to take this one on notice, which is, what is the average cost to council to create a new square metre of footpath? And what is the current average cost to fill a pothole? Now, obviously, potholes will vary in size, but I'm hopeful to get some understanding of roughly, you know, you can do the division by the number of field or whatever. So if I can get a rough understanding of those metrics, that'll be very helpful.
Mr Graham, do you have that off the top of your head?
No.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor James.
Now, two questions. Firstly, with regard to the Cremon pipe clay management plan. Have the consultants concluded their survey? And if so, is there the intention to include funds in the Budget 23, 24?
Thank you councillor James. Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor. We're due from the consultants' end of March, early April for their draft report on the draft local coastal management plan for Pipe Clay Lagoon. And we believe we may receive Roaches Beach one at the same time. Council officers will review that, then we will workshop with council. It's unlikely we're going to be looking at funds for next financial year because there's consultation with the community required, several workshops with council. The plans overall, under review, will be under review with council.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor James, do you have a second one?
Second one, thank you, is with regard to the Kangaroo Bay Boulevard. A DA obviously went through this place some time back. And is there a clause for substantial commencement to occur? And also, when will the permit expire?
Thank you. I'll ask Sir Yeo to answer that. Yes, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. There is no current agreement on substantial commencement for that. As you would be aware from the briefing, councillor James, we have to establish a sale and development agreement as the next part of the process. The development permit is open to the same extensions that all permits are. That is, the granting of or the requesting of two extensions, as we've discussed previously with councillors, and the granting of those which total six years.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. So related to my question on notice at the previous meeting about Belarive ferry parking, there's a, in the response, a note that the information about the survey was provided through a memo to council. But I don't actually recall receiving that memo. I was wondering if somebody could point out when it was sent or...
Thank you, Mr Graham.
Sorry, that hasn't gone out, but will go out to council this week.
Good question, councillor Hume.
I was wondering about, it said to be, so good to know that's on the way. Also, I just want to point to a elected member request that I had about parking issues around... Does it actually in the title of this AMR say what the name of the road is? But I had a feeling it was called Beach Road, but it's a road that runs between East Elwyn Highway and Lindisfarne Esplanade. The request about possible responses to the issue or possible parking restrictions, I lodged back in November and I'm just wondering if some light could be shed on why it's taken so long to respond to it.
Thank you councillor Hume. Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'll have to take that one on notice and we'll give it a priority.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Two questions tonight. The first one is a number of community members have raised concern about the Seven Mile Beach Golf Development Golf Course. I'm just wondering whether once a development application has been approved, are the conditions publicly available?
Can I just clarify? So this is the Five Mile Matt Goggan proposal?
The Seven Mile Beach, one that's already been approved.
Okay, thank you. Mr Lovell, you able to shed some light on this one first?
Through, Mr Mayor. Copies of any permit are available to the councillors on request. Whether or not they're made available to the public is something we would need to explore. There are oftentimes privacy issues with permits and they may differ from permit to permit. And a practical example is sometimes a permit might show details of a private person's house, which has happened before, and that neighbours would like to see what's going on in the house. So there are privacy issues around things like that. That probably doesn't apply to the golf course, but there are certain things we would need to check. I would need to take advice from our legal department and hopefully those things could be provided. And I suspect those things that can't be would be accessible by freedom of information.
Thank you. Your second question, councillor Hunter.
Thank you. Just the planning matter raised tonight with the church made me question whether Clarence Council has an open space strategy? And if not, is there any expected timeline when there might be one?
Thank you. Mr Lovell? Mr Graham, sorry.
Through, Mr Mayor. We have a public open space policy, which is taken into account in assessing planning applications involving subdivisions. And we're currently working on expanding that policy to deal with how we go about selecting open spaces, whereabouts to locate them. And we came upon that need when we were looking through the last council at providing open space in the Riston Vale area. Some of the old, the councillors from the former council would be aware of that particular project. So we're working on it at the moment and we'll probably be doing a workshop in it in the very near future.
Thank you, Mr Lovell. Councillor Mulder.
Mr Mayor, I have two. The first one being, there are two large real estate billboards on councilland at Estramena Drive in Oakdown. Last October, I was informed that the agent concerned had been directed to remove them. Why are they still there?
Thank you councillor Mulder. See, or Mr Lovell?
I'm unaware of that, but it is, it sounds like something that our enforcement officer would deal with. So I'll take that on notice and we'll be able to report back on how the matter was dealt with.
Maybe the weekly briefing report, please, the next one. Thank you. Thank you councillor Mulder.
My second question, Mr Mayor, is according to the minutes of the last meeting, councillors are required to notify gifts and/or donations, including political donations exceeding the value of $50 to the chief executive officer. Mr Mayor, have you provided such notification in regard to the political donations made at your campaign launch last year?
Councillor Mulder, in answer to that, I have at all times complied fully with the expectation. Any review of the register of interest will indicate that I received one donation of $500 in September of last year. The campaign launch that you referred to wasn't for me, it was for the better Clarence team. And that was spelled out very clearly to every person that attended that event. It was spelled out in every piece of correspondence. And let me just reassure you, colleagues and the general public, that at all times I have complied fully with the expectations of full disclosure. I would also just make the point too, and refer back to the letter that was sent by Mr Matthew Healy, the director of local government, and point four of his letter, where he states quite clearly accusations of impropriety. Councillors must not accuse others of impropriety without pursuing their claim through appropriate formal channels. Councillors must also avoid unreasonably inferring or attaching intent or meaning to the actions of others for the purposes of damaging the reputation or lessening the value of their contribution to a discussion or debate. So I'll just leave that with you, but also make the point too, that was very genuine when I sent that, forwarded that letter from Mr Healy to all colleagues on the 23rd of January, saying that this term of council needs to be one of all us bringing our best selves to this chamber. And it is not appropriate for you to make those sort of imputations. It is absolutely incorrect. There is no basis in fact whatsoever. And I would strongly suggest, particularly in light of our code of conduct and statement of expectations, that you treat very carefully. That's all I'll be saying on this matter, councillor Mulder. Happy to draw a line under it. But if further action's required, further action will be taken. Thank you. Colleagues, moving now, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I am happy for this to be taken on notice. My question relates to all abilities playground equipment. And I'm just wondering if I could be provided with a list of the recreational facilities across Clarence and detailing those which actually have within them any all abilities equipment.
Mr Graham.
Yes, I'll take that one on notice, thank you.
Deputy Mayor, that's it?
Yes.
All right. Colleagues, thank you. Moving now on to item 11. I'll call for a motion to move into closed meeting. A mover, please. Thank you councillor Chong. Second to councillor Kennedy. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Thank you. Well, thank you to those members of the public that have been very patient and thank you for joining us this evening. I now have to close the meeting, so feel free to come back in three weeks' time. Thank you. And close the feed, please.